Evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, May the 4th, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District Five.
Kevin Day, District Four.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council District One.
Gary Hall, District Two.
Mary Ferguson, at large.
Lady gentlemen, at large.
James Kaufman, Court Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Council. Special presentation, I wanted to do a moment of silence for Officer Breann Leath. She passed away since we last met. And one of our council members, Bobby Ferguson, knew her quite well. And we want to pay her the respect that she deserves. So I would ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, Council. Bob, you want to say anything?
I'll bring it up for closing.
Okay. This Thursday at noon is the National Day of Prayer on the, what, 12 noon. So we certainly invite all of you to join us who are here and viewing at home tonight. So I wanted to pass that on. Council, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, March the 2nd, 2020. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If there are no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We'll move to committee reports. The ABC did not meet in April, and I don't believe, Council, they're going to meet in May as well. RDC, Liz, do you have a report?
Yeah, thank you. The RDC had a telephonic meeting on Thursday, April the 2nd. We had, we approved dock payments, invoices for the total of $5,334.18. Our balance to date is $299,974.50. We voted Nathan Rinks for Vice President. And then we had two members resign, and I believe everyone has their resignation letter from the council. And that's all I have.
Questions for the RDC. The Compliance Division is closed. We sent them a notice today. They are tentatively scheduled to come back May the 26th. Same way with fire prevention. The Greenscape Commission did not meet. The other committee report this evening is financial. And I'll ask the clerk to come up and read a prepared statement.
Good evening. COVID-19 has affected us all in more ways than we could have ever anticipated. This not only applies to our personal and work lives, but also to our city government and how it will be forced to operate for years to come. City Hall has been working on a modified schedule in an effort to minimize exposure to our employees. City Hall has been closed to the public and will remain closed for some time. Permits are still being received and processed on a timely basis. Citizens are still able to pay their sewer bills online, by phone, by mail, or by dropping their payments off in the 24-hour drop box. Our office has received a large amount of calls in regard to sewer and trash increases. Most citizens understand this was decided on a couple of months ago and understand the reasoning behind the increases. We also informed them that the charges are scheduled to go up again in January '21. I've been in contact with the State Board of Accounts, AIM, and our financial consultant in regard to current financial issues due to COVID-19 and how they will affect local municipalities. During a webinar last week with the SBOA and AIM, we were told to expect a 35% to 45% drop in our monthly MVH tax distributions for May, June, and July of this year, and possibly longer. We should not see any impacts on local income taxes that are received in 2020. However, we are told we should expect a drastic drop in what will be paid to the City of Beech Grove in 2021. Experts are not sure exactly how much it will affect us, but hope to have a better idea close to the budget time. We receive property tax distributions in June of each year. Due to the governor's suspension of property tax penalties until July after those taxpayers that don't pay via mortgage escrow, we expect a delay in payments until after our June settlement. About 29% of property taxes in Marion County are paid via mortgage escrow. So we expect those payments will be paid on time for our June settlement. Those paid after the original due date and dispersment will be paid out in installments over the following months. Other revenue streams like license, excise. Tax, financial institution tax, and commercial vehicle excise tax seem to be unaffected for now and should remain fairly stagnant in 2020. AIM has encouraged municipalities to seek any and all funding options now, as no one can quite foresee how bad the COVID-19 effects will be coming through. I honestly believe we will be okay, but I've been in contact with the Indiana Bond Bank and financial consultants to see what options we do have. I stress the need to look at spending on any items that are nonessential to all department heads. I applaud them for following this request during these tough times. It does not mean easy, and they understand it might not be for some time. There are no new positions being offered. Offered in the city, and part-time employees have been minimal. There will be no new vehicle or equipment purchases or any new debt issued for the foreseeable future. Discussions on new police and fire facilities have been put on hold. I will continue to keep you updated on what I am able to find out. The City of Beech Grove received a check from Franciscan Alliance in the amount of $400,000. This is for the naming rights for the Franciscan Trail, and the check has been deposited into the corporate account. This is one of the final pieces for Franciscan Trail before going to bid later this year. The City of Beech Grove also received $26,613.97 as part of the CARES Act. The City of Beech Grove received Medicare reimbursements in 2019, which made us automatically eligible for this payment. The bank balances are listed below as of today, May 4th, 2020. These totals are prior to the claims that were approved this evening. City Corporation, $2,204,782.40. Criminal Investigation Fund, $38,286.70. RDC General, $299,974.50. RDC Debt Service, $240,000. We have been busy updating current information on the city website. There are over 300 pages to the current website, so there's still some work to do. If anyone sees anything that needs updated, please let me know. I will continue to have updated information as the year continues. If you have any questions at all, please let me know. James Kaufman.
Any questions for the clerk?
The financial just fund, that really hasn't grown much over the last year or so. Is there, what's been the highest amount you've had in that fund in the past year?
I don't know.
This year, I don't think we've gotten any payments this year for that. I'm not sure how.
Yeah, it seems like kind of a dry spell because it normally, you know, we see it from time to time again. I know sometimes it will go that way.
I don't know, buddy. I don't, I don't know.
The fund has sometimes been, has been high. I know that, you know, they're going to use it for things that they can use it for. I was just curious. I wondered if anything had been put in.
I appreciate Jim's work. Very good job. And it's a little tight right now, and he's taken control of it. We started with four million in the corporate fund. Five months later, we're down to two million, so that's really good. And so, and then that will be resurged in June and July, so that's good. Any other, any questions on committee reports?
I have a question. Jim, on the financial reports, some of that stuff's been taken off the website. Some people have inquired about that. Have you added to stuff, or have you physically removed stuff, or is it just moving things around? Can you address that?
No, it's still all new, the dockets. The financial reports are all in there. We didn't meet last month, so that month is missing because we didn't have a financial report last month. But the dockets are on there. The dockets have all the financial information on there.
They are? Are they in the treasures? Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The money from the CARES Act, is that you set aside something specific, or is it just a program that they're throwing out?
Yeah, the fire department knows you have to use it for COVID stuff or reimbursement of expenses that they've used last month or that.
Very good. Good question. That's a good question. Let's move to unfinished business carried over from the last meeting. We had two resignations of the RDC, Barbara Hook and Dave Grenoble. And we printed out their resignation letter and put it in the packet. So at this time, there are two openings, and both of them are council appointments. There was one gentleman, and I don't know if he had a conversation with you, Bobby, or not. He lives in Bobby's district. I sent him a note saying he can't come up tonight, but I did put his email in the package just so you can view it. So I didn't know if he wanted to comment on that or not.
Yes, actually, Mr. Easely actually came over to my residence. We practiced social defense team for our hour-long conversation at that. I was pretty impressed with him. He is a younger, one of our younger community members, just recently moved to Beech Grove about a year ago, expecting his first child. And he's very passionate about wanting to improve the city and attract younger families here to Beech Grove.
Other than Mr. Easely, I have not received any interest from anyone via email on these current positions. So one thing to keep in mind, Council, is that the RDC meets in May, but they don't meet in June.
I think, I think we're going to meet in June.
You are?
Yeah.
Mayor, I think, at least we talked about not meeting in May and meeting in June because there's a very important thing we have to determine in June to send to the overlapping tax industry. And it's always been a problem because Donald Webb never wanted to meet in June, but we'd like to switch that around, I think. Is that Liz?
Yes. I didn't, I didn't understand we were going to not have a meeting in May. I think that, I think the commission will be fine having a meeting in May and June.
Okay.
That's my take on it, if you're okay with that.
But I'll open the floor up to whatever the council, whatever path they want to take. If they want to table this, if they want to nominate Mr. Easely, or if they want to see who else is interested.
I know that I've had opportunity to work with Mr. Easely on several of the nonprofit efforts for the City of Beech Grove. And Jim, you can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he has a lot of awareness or knowledge on grant writing. Is that correct? Has he assisted? He's helped with some grant writing?
Next Stop Beech Grove.
Next Stop Beech Grove. So he would, he'd certainly have, has a lot of, a lot of background to help.
Can I, can I circle back and ask a question?
Yes.
This is May, so five months into this 48-month serving, we've had three appointments, and for various reasons, three have stepped down. Ms. Wolf, Grenoble, and Hooks. And they're all folks that we've appointed from the council. Is there something we're doing wrong? I mean, I don't, people going into the positions volunteering are very motivated, and very quickly they're burnt out, and they haven't even started. So I don't, have you, have you?
I'm sorry. No, I, the appointment, Terrell Wolf was a great appointment.
Okay.
And there was a lot of pressure because her husband works for the firm, and has an interesting crossroads. And their firm is heavily involved in the trail, and the part of the RDC works with the trail, so there was a conflict there. So she had to step aside. That wasn't anything that you thought she did.
Yeah, right.
That was a great appointment. She was a great appointment.
Okay.
And Grenoble and Hook, not sure what the dynamics were, but I wouldn't blame anybody else there on this.
Well, I'm just concerned by Grenoble. And again, you guys all have the emails. I spoke to Dave, and then, of course, I referenced to the statements that he made in here about, you know, legal concerns. And I don't want to go across that line, because I want to give the citizens the most that we can give them as far as a body. But even when the citizens volunteering on a committee like this, and then they're noticing there's issues. I mean, this is the new president, I guess, effective February. Do you, do you see issues too, Liz, or do you have concerns, or do you?
Well, I, my concern would be that there was a lot of going around outside the commission to investigate and get out, which is fine. They have the opportunity to look. And I know Mr. Grenoble told me several times that he was appointed by the council, so he had that to say that he was, he felt like he was serving the council because he was their appointee. But we did have some conflicts with going outside our attorney advice and, and some other departments in Marion County. So it seemed like there was a lot of confusion as far as us all staying together on the same line of things. And then not only was some of the information that was spread out when it came back, it wasn't represented correctly to the outside interest. So, you know, you know, it was, you could read what Mr. Grenoble said. You know, he basically didn't think that the RDC was functioning according to what RDC. So I, I could ask for Mr. Run to kind of add anything if he can, but we did have some issues with him going outside and consulting with outside attorney firms.
Okay. But, okay, so as a member of that committee, so he seeked other counsel, yet was it, so the wisdom that he seeked from that, that legal attorney, not Mr. Reddick, from the, and I think he also referred to the Indiana Development Commission members, and was that factual? I mean, was anyone in the wrong? I mean, because?
I'm not, I'm not the RDC attorney, and I'm not the RDC expert. So I don't know what the information he was bringing. I can't specifically say anything, because there was a lot of information. He was always giving us a lot of outside information from other, outside sources.
Okay.
And it was kind of difficult to separate what he was telling us from what we, the council that we had for the RDC.
Okay, so is it okay to address Robert, or is that?
Hi, is that okay with you, Mr. Run?
Did you see anything, any white flags? Because again, I'm, I just want to circle back, and if we're doing something wrong, we need to fix that here now. But on the other hand, if there was, you know, a concern, was that concern addressed, or was it just?
Well, he, he would get materials, and I think he may have been on a list serve. I don't know whether he was reaching out to an attorney of arms or whether he was on a list serve, which went out to a lot of RDC members across Indiana. But there were two issues that he adequately disagreed with. And there was one was the payment of Kim Schollwoller's audiovisual work. We researched that. I wrote an opinion letter, which Jim has, which indicates our legal opinion that that was a perfectly appropriate expenditure under law laws. His other big issue was the payment of $18.45 a month for stormwater on the landfill. That one is more of a gray area.
Because the city, that's actually the city's property, right?
The city actually owns that, yeah.
So, so, well, that, to me, that's.
It is in the TIF district, and the RDC was involved in trying to redevelop that, as you may recall, the prior administration tried to redevelop the park.
Right.
The, there was a IED complaint because of erosion into the lit creek. And the RDC spent money putting a cap on gravel and soil.
Okay.
But it's still an issue of IED concern, but it's $18.45. Legal and practice standpoint, I don't care whether the city pays that $18.45 or whether the RDC does.
Well, I care on that one, because if that's, if that's what I need, because the RDC doesn't own anything, correct? I mean, it's, as far as.
They don't own the property.
Right. So, okay, so that would.
Still in the TIF district, though, right?
It is in the TIF. It is.
Yeah, so that they can pay it.
I think initially, for TIFs, once you initially set that up, but it shouldn't be an ongoing payment, right, for the TIF?
There's an issue as to whether, if you're redeveloping it, or it supports something that's in a TIF district, or it serves the TIF district purpose, you can spend TIF funds on that. But there was a court decision, it's not statutory, but there was a court decision two or three years ago, Alamonster, that indicated that you can't spend TIF revenues once something is redeveloped on maintenance. So the question on this issue is, has it been redeveloped or not? I certainly can argue that it's not, it hasn't been redeveloped, but again, I have no strong opinion one way or the other on $18.45, $18.45 a month on stormwater. But I'm very clear in my opinion on the ability of the commission to pay the audiovisual contract, because it's a form of marketing. Businesses that may be interested in having something redeveloped, whether they're in Beech Grove or without Beech Grove, that they watch these, that they can see how the commission operates, they can see what the commission's priorities are. So I have no, no qualms about that opinion of the payment of that amount of money. $225 a medium.
So the medium is not a gray area, it's a, it's a go-go.
For me.
Okay, for you. Okay, legally. Okay.
Entertain any type of motion concerning appointments to the RDC, or table RDC appointments.
I'd make a motion to table.
Motion to table? Second?
I'll second.
There's a motion to table and a second, and we'll individual vote, starting with Dave.
I didn't know we were, I didn't really know.
You're gonna, you, you made a motion to table and then a second.
Yeah, okay.
So now it comes for a vote.
I'll vote to table.
Kevin? Liz?
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
So that's, help me, five to two, table. Tabled until we meet again, which is June 1st.
Hopefully June 1st.
Okay. All right. That concludes unfinished business.
Easely, the effort.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be talking to him again.
We should be back to normal June 1st. New business, Resolution Number Five, 2020, is a donation from Franciscan Alliance to the City of Beech Grove concerning a plot of land on the old hospital property, approximately 30 feet by 70 feet. So at this time, I'll ask the clerk to come up and read the resolution into the record.
I got it up here.
Resolution Number Five, 2020, Common Council, City of Beech Grove, Indiana. Resolution Number Five, 2020, authorized as the City of Beech Grove to accept the gift of real property from Franciscan Alliance Incorporated, formerly known as Sisters of St. Francis Health Services Incorporated. Whereas the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, is a municipal entity organized and existing under provisions of Indiana Code 36-1-4, and whereas Franciscan Alliance Incorporated, formerly known as Sisters of St. Francis Health Services, is a domestic nonprofit entity organized and existing as a qualified IRS 501 charitable entity. Whereas Franciscan Alliance owns a real, owns a certain real property located in Marion County, Indiana, located near 17th Avenue and Albany Street, or particularly described as parcel ID number 49-10-21-131-002.000-102. Apart there, legal description, part of the southwest corner of Section 21, Township 15 North, Range 4, east of the second principal meridian. Commencing at the southwest corner of said southwest corner, thence north, 00 degrees, 47 minutes, 59 seconds, east, along the west line of said southwest quarter, a distance of 93.14 feet. Thence south, 89 degrees, 12 minutes, 1 second, east, a distance of 53.00 feet to the east boundary of 17th Avenue and the north boundary of Albany Street. Thence along said north boundary, the following two courses. One, south, 47 degrees, 18 minutes, 53 seconds, east, a distance of 58.10 feet. Two, north, 90 degrees, 00 minutes, 00 seconds, a distance of 181.32 feet to the place of beginning. Thence north, 00 degrees, 00 minutes, 00 seconds, west, a distance of 30 feet. Thence north, 90 degrees, 00 minutes, 00 seconds, east, a distance of 30 feet to said north boundary. Thence south, 90 degrees, 00 minutes, 00 seconds, west, along said north boundary, a distance of 70 feet to the place of beginning, containing 0.048 acres, more or less. Whereas Franciscan Alliance has determined that the property is no longer needed for its purposes. Whereas Franciscan Alliance has offered to gift the property to Beech Grove, a municipal entity exempt from federal income taxation. Whereas the Beech Grove Common Council desires to accept this gift of the property. Whereas the Beech Grove Common Council and the Franciscan Alliance Board of Directors have determined that it should be in the best interest of each entity to convey the property from Franciscan Alliance to Beech Grove. Whereas Beech Grove and Franciscan Alliance agree that no money shall be paid by Beech Grove to Franciscan Alliance for conveyance of the property to Beech Grove. Whereas Beech Grove and Franciscan Alliance will adopt substantially identical resolutions to authorize the conveyance of the property from Franciscan Alliance to Beech Grove. Now therefore be it resolved that the City, that the Beech Grove Common Council approve the acceptance of the property from Franciscan Alliance. Be it further resolved that the resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage by the Common Council, signed by each, the Council President, attested by the Clerk, Treasurer, and the Mayor, who are each further authorized to execute all corresponding documents to effect the conveyance and gift. Passed by vote recorded on the following page of the Common Council of the City of Beech Grove, this date, May 4th, 2020.
This property that's being donated is a small cutout of a, about a little less than three-acre tract that St. Francis or Franciscan Alliance owns that is necessary for part of the Greenway Trail, as I understand it. And so they're donating that, and it sort of goes along with their donation of the $400,000 for the naming rights. It's my understanding that St. Franciscan Alliance Board of Directors will meet on the 16th, May 16th, and adopt what we call a mirrored resolution that's substantially identical. This is the acceptance resolution, and they'll adopt their donation resolution at that time.
Thanks, Bob.
We'll open the floor up for any questions or comments.
Will the Trailway actually pass on that property, or will, is that just a park area?
That's just a park area, and, uh, eventually it'll lead up fifteenth and sixteenth down to the park. And pick up the trail. But, uh, what, uh, what this tra, what this trailhead does for Saint Francis, uh, is people will be able to go up, walk up to the tra, to the trailhead and read about what used to be on this property. And I, I think it's really good, uh, what they want, what Franciscan Alliance wants to do is they want to maintain, even though they don't have a hospital there anymore, they want to maintain their legacy in the city of Beech Grove. So they've decided to purchase the naming rights, the trail will be called Franciscan Trail. And then throughout the trail, you'll be able to read about Saint Francis. Some of the things that they did, especially up here at this trailhead. So, uh, they, uh, are willing, they want to donate this property to the city of Beech Grove. Don't know what the value of the, uh, property is, this, this small corner, but the appraised value per acre over there is about a hundred thousand, top.
Wow.
So there is some value to this. But, uh, I just think it's a neat, uh, public-private partnership that we're doing with these folks, and I certainly recommend that you, that you pass this. So, any, any other questions or comments?
I just, for the record, for transparent, I want to make sure that, uh, it's by the attorneys that it's okay that I vote on this, since I'm an employee of Saint Francis, but I do not have any, I, I'm a, as a staff nurse, I don't have any authority to make decisions, how monies are dispensed, I have, I don't serve on any boards.
And me as well.
Oh, that's right, Mr. Temple.
I don't see a problem.
Okay.
It's not, you're, you're not, uh, executive, an officer, a stockholder or one-
Just for public awareness, I wanted to make sure that that was-
Having said that, uh-
Can I ask you one more, you addressed the actual, the value, is there any allowability from previous? Is there any issues at all that you're, public, okay, so it's a win-win?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? The panel asked for motion to approve Resolution Number Five, two thousand twenty.
I'll make said motion.
Second?
Uh, we'll individually vote, starting with Dave.
Yes. Aye.
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 The motion passes seven to nothing, please register your vote. While you're signing your vote, if you drive by there and you see stakes, survey stakes behind it, there is a company that has bought, uh, that parcel, and, uh, they're a Beech Grove company, they're going to move their, build a new, uh, office building there. So probably sometime this summer, they're going to come and do a presentation for you folks, so.
General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty, is a ordinance that adjusts the ambulance rates for the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance into the record.
General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty. General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty, is an ordinance that amends Chapter thirty-four, Section thirty-four point one five B of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove pursuant to charges for ambulance responses generated by the Beech Grove Fire Department. Whereas the city must find other ways to generate funds to operate government, other than depending on property taxes. And whereas the Beech Grove Fire Department has provided emergency ambulance services since nineteen seventy-three, and began billing for services provided in nineteen eighty-seven. And whereas from time to time, rates are recommended to be adjusted to capture increases approved by government and private agencies for payment of claims. And whereas in two thousand nineteen, the City of Beech Grove Fire Department responded to over four thousand six hundred ninety-five calls for emergency services. Now therefore be it affirmed that the Common Council of the City of Beech Grove desires to amend Chapter thirty-five point one five of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove, Indiana. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the Common Council of the City of Beech Grove instructs that the following changes be made in Chapter thirty-four, Section thirty-four point one five B. Delete Chapter thirty-four, Section thirty-four point one five B in its entirety, and replace with the following. Chapter thirty-four, Section three four point one five B. Service: Basic Life Support, rate, two thousand four dollars. Advanced Life Support, Level One, rate, two thousand four hundred twelve dollars and thirty-five cents. Advanced Life Support, Level Two, rate, two thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and three cents. Signature of Release, rate, seventy-five dollars. Mileage, rate, forty-one dollars, forty-nine cents, per loaded mile. Community Paramedicine, rate, two hundred and fifty dollars. Hazardous Material Response, rate, five hundred dollars first hour, fifty dollars for every fifteen minutes after the first hour. Turnout Gear Replacement, rate, two thousand five hundred dollars per set. Turnout Gear Decontamination Cleaning, rate, five hundred dollars per set if still not for cleaning, one hundred dollars per set if cleaned in-house. Therefore be it affirmed that the Common Council desires to amend Chapter thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter thirty-four of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove and no other chapter. Therefore be it further affirmed that the ordinance shall go into effect on June first, two thousand twenty, after passage by the Common Council, attested by the Clerk, Treasurer, and signed by the Mayor.
Floor is open, floor is open for questions or comments from council.
This is to get, uh, Beech Grove Fire Department up to par with what being charged in the current council.
Yes. Point. IEMS comes into Beech Grove to help us, that's what, this is what they charge, our, our folks. This is up for approval on first reading only. Well, if there's no further comments or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
That's a toss-up.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second and third reading at the June first council meeting. Thank you, council. The, uh, next four items, Jim, do you want to do these? They're up here.
I'll defer to the clerk.
Every, uh, when somebody has, uh, a conflict of interest, uh, they have to disclose that to the city council, vote on it, approve it, and then it's sent on to the state board of accounts on the gateway. Um, we've done this for a few people before, there are some new ones that have come through. First one is, uh, for Dawn McKenna, she's a facility manager at, um, the community center. Her son, Ian Schwartz, uh, will be working for the Parks Department part-time. There is no direct line of supervision there, so, um, she just wanted to disclose that to the city. Second one is for Nathan Rinks, um, he is a member of the RDC, and also a Beech Grove, uh, police officer. Kathy Chapel, she's a member of the RDC, um, and also a part-time employee of the Beech Grove Compliance Office. Liz Lamping, RDC member, um, and, uh, city council member as well, so she's on the RDC as well, so. They have four conflict of, uh, interests disclosure statements, just disclosing those to you, uh, for approval, and then submit it to, uh, the state.
Jim, is there a reason why there's two different forms that are filled out?
There should be.
Indiana code is different on, on this, um, I just want to make sure the forms look correct after they formed, they're filled out in a while.
That's a good question.
Yeah, one four and one three.
I'd have to defer to legal for that, I'm not sure that's a good question. One of them is, it says thirty, thirty-five dash four four point one, one through four.
That's, that's the conflict of interest statute.
Well, they should all have, they should all be thirty-five, huh, thirty-five, forty-four, one.
I guess one of them has one through three, and the other ones have one through four.
I think they should all be on the same-
Yeah, that's weird, though, I'm not sure how that-
Yeah.
Well, they both say Form two thirty-six, though.
Right.
Does it say revised or superseded, or? Yeah, we can have them update them if, if they need to be, but they said they think they're okay, but yeah, they, they both say Form, uh, same form number on there, which is interesting.
Okay, I would say moving forward, just make sure that we use the same form.
No problem.
If there's no further, uh, questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve all four conflict of interests for, uh- All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, council. That concludes new business, uh, council comments, we'll start here with Dave, Dave?
I have none. I just want to thank our first responders, uh, all our health people, you know, I know it's a tough time for everybody. Hope everyone stays healthy. I also wanted to bring up, uh, I know the fireworks are canceled. Uh, is there any way to move that money we were going to use for the fireworks over to perhaps Little League and softball funds? Is that a possibility?
I could, uh, I think that's something the council could hear. If we do it tonight, or we could do it in June?
Little League's always on a shoestring budget, and obviously they're not playing now. Probably, may or may not, make a many future play, so I'd like to see some of that money be used. If we're not going to use it for fireworks, maybe, uh, spread it between softball and Little League.
I would defer to the council and let the council, uh, decide whether to do it or not, I don't have an issue with it.
How much money are you talking?
Nine thousand five hundred dollars. That could be brought up, uh, at the June first. Didn't have to be brought up tonight. According to the governor's plan, uh, Phase Four recreational sports cannot start back up until Stage Four, which is June the fourteenth. So, just something to think about, I think that's a, a good point, Kevin. I don't know what degree they did, but Little League baseball, international.
Cancel the World Series, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, they canceled that today, so.
That acceptable, Kevin? Next meeting?
Yeah, if everybody thinks it's a good idea, yeah, going forward.
Liz?
I, I would like to give it more thought, I mean, to, to get all the money just to one organization?
Well, no, two, Little, Little League and softball, two different-
Okay, yeah.
Two different organizations, but-
City's youth.
That is the, um, help me out with, uh, the, our organization that puts on the fireworks, do they have any say-so? In, in, in this, with this money as all, as far as their-
About two months ago, um, the two members of the promoters' club came to me and asked me if, if, um, the city could help them find somebody to pay for the fireworks, because they were short of funds. And, um, so we had a couple, three meetings, and I, the more I thought about it, you know, um, I thought that it might be a good idea if the city would pay for the fireworks. I talked it over with Jim, because July third was a Friday, and we could tie first Friday with the fireworks and have Main Street from five to eight have the good first Friday, and then the fireworks at nine. So we started working on it, and, uh, uh, and then this COVID nineteen came up, and all bets were off, so. It was just a thought, but I don't think, without the help of the city or a sponsor, I don't think, just speaking for myself, I don't think the fireworks would have happened anyway. So, um, and the, the Phase Five kind of sealed it for July third. But that's where we're at with that, I mean-
Liz, anything else?
Uh, no, I, I, that's fine with me, I just, I wonder even if we could use it for other areas, just as far as, it's a great idea to put the money back into community, yeah, for programs, even, even for parks, even the parks programs, yeah, yeah.
Gary?
Um, yes, sir, thank you. Do you have any updates on the, uh, the dealings with the apartments, you were going to address those? It's been like sixty days, any kind of updates on that, or?
Yeah, there was three, there was three apartment complexes-
Okay.
That wanted to come and talk to you. Uh, one of them was Beach Metal, right by the high school, and they sent you an email. And Willow Glen and Beech Grove Village. All of them understand that the rates have to be adjusted, that's not the point. They wanted to talk to you about being, uh, flat rate versus usage. So, um, what I wanted to do, I wanted to give them the opportunity to come in front of you and, and talk to you about their situation, because right now with the usage, they have a sixty percent increase in their fees. And they, they just want to have the opportunity to come and talk to you about this, and I didn't want to shut that door on those people. So, they're going to come in June to, to speak with you and ask you to, to take another look at that portion of the, uh, ordinance, so that's where we're at, Gary.
Okay, 'cause that, I know, that's something Kevin had mentioned, and I know that, that'd be April, May, then June, for the citizens of residential. So that's, you know, three months of payments of, of an increase, you have the apartment here. So, I, I just wanted some, so people could know.
Yeah, that's, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
That's a, that's a fair question.
Thank you.
Anything else, Gary?
No, sir, thank you, stay safe.
Um, I'm not sure if this is possible or not, but, but nine thousand for the fireworks, is there any way that we can put that back into the community with, like, uh, setting up a food bank or something, or donating to something to get back to people who are in transit food banks now, or? I don't know, I just know that there's a lot of people out of work that aren't getting as much as they worked before, and there's a lot of kids, and the schools are doing a ton of things, so I just- I just know that there's a lot of people out of work that aren't getting as much as they were before, and there's a lot of kids, and the schools are doing a ton of things, so I just, I don't know.
There, there's a, there's, to my knowledge, three area, three groups in Beach Grove where people can get food. One is, uh, is it Circle of Hope on South Fourth? Church of Hope?
Church of Hope.
Church of Hope on South Fourth, Servant's Heart, and then the community center has a food bank. None of those are funded by city funds, it's all private donations. And, uh, uh, the need is great, uh, it's unbelievable the amount of meals that get passed out every Wednesday at four-thirty at the corner park. Uh, there's a great need and that's going to be one of the problems once this phase of COVID passes of the exposure itself, then we go into the economic downturn and then the food, the food, uh, deserts and food insecurities. So it's a three-pronged thing and, and it's coming and, but that's a good point and I'm not sure where that would be with the, uh, taxpayer, or funded, taxpayer-funded dollars going to food bank, I don't know. But I think this thought is nice.
Or if we, we could buy it ourselves and disperse it.
Oh, absolutely.
Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, you know, there's a lot of kids at school or at home right now, and sometimes those parents are able to go, for whatever reason, get those meals, so.
Buddy, any, any comments?
No, just the comments, we're trying to do stuff for the community, put back in there on the parks in the right way, so we'll be able to figure something out. Other than that, just thank you to, especially working in a hospital, watching nurses and doctors. I regret that Monday's hearing this one and, uh, we go with, go with the EMS workers that come in, police and fire that have to come in contact because they don't have a choice, it's, uh, just thank you to all of them for, uh, for doing that. There's no way to get around it and they do it, so.
Bobby?
Uh, first I want to bring something to everybody's attention, uh, I was driving down Main Street the other day and saw a lot of banners that were hanging from the light poles, probably not Main Street, on Emerson Avenue. The banners were falling down, they're ripped, they're hanging down, I contacted Brad, uh, we had a great conversation about it. He had informed me that he's already working on it, hopefully next week those banners will be removed to where it's not such an eyesore, we parked driving down Emerson Avenue with all the banners hanging down and ripped on Emerson Avenue.
We, uh, I don't really, I've got to be careful with that because the banners were of such poor quality and inexpensive. So I just, probably better.
Yeah.
Jim can comment on it.
They, uh, they purchased, uh, last year, uh, from Beach Grove, um, probably they purchased them, um, they bought them about five years ago and again last year. Unfortunately, we needed it a year after this year. But, um, they're be taken down and knocked it back up, but yeah, they just did not do it at all. And I agree, I, I've just been counting over the last couple of weeks, more and more down, more and more. Yeah, unfortunately, we, we back up.
Bobby, you're missing persons, you don't miss nothing.
No, no, I'm, uh, I'm pretty up to speed on stuff. And also lastly, I'd like to thank the, uh, Beach Grove community and also, uh, Mayor Buckley for their outpouring of support, uh, following the death of, uh, INPD officer, Brianna Lee. Uh, I knew Lee, Lee worked the shift before mine, uh, I knew her mom very well, she was my control operator for years. She will be missed, uh, she was a great officer, but I definitely, I know the INPD, all the family appreciates the outpouring of support from the community, thank you.
I have one more thing there, but I apologize, I thought I was responding to Kevin's, uh, the money for the, for the park. I just want to invite everybody to drive by my house at two thirty-five North Thirteenth, the back of my property. There's a shed and it's, uh, the white, uh, two of our local arti- wonderful artists, Cherie Joy and then her friend, I apologize, her name's on the, the, the shed. They did a beautiful painting, I asked them that they, that they could, I told them they could use the back of my shed just to do a message of hope for the community. They came out tonight when I got home and it, you know, was in tears, they painted this most beautiful, you'll just have to see it. But is, there's a true message of hope on my shed, behind my property. And I've got her card, if anybody's interested, they will, they're just going around, it didn't cost anything, I'm going to donate some money, but they just want to go home, go around the community and just paint messages of hopes, uh, messages of hope, uh, on, on buildings. And it's really cool, I encourage you to go by the middle school, drive by the middle school and look at my shed. Cool message, just uplifting.
Thank you, I, one more thing I want to do, uh, council, uh, before we leave is over the last two weeks to a month, we get all these directives from, from the governor, uh, Mayor Hogsitt, myself. And you, you start to get confused, uh, as to what you can do and what you can't do. So I asked Craig if he would come up and very briefly ex- explain the governor and the mayor of Indianapolis as the county executive and mayor of an excluded city, can you, Craig, come up and talk about that very briefly?
Yeah, as Mayor said, uh, there's been some confusion and, and especially with, uh, some of the business owners on Main Street wanting to know what their rights and responsibilities are as business owners when they can, um, you know, get back into business. And as a general rule, we have to follow the governor's, uh, proclamations and executive orders and, and they're online, you can go on the, uh, www.in.gov and get those, I think he's issued like twenty, the most recent one is executive order twenty-two. And most of them had to do with, with the COVID crisis, but, um, what confused things is when, uh, Mayor Hogsitt stepped in and extended the, uh, stay-at-home order to the fifteenth. And, um, as the county executive, he has the authority to do that, he can't issue something, um, more generous than what the governor did, but he can do something more restrictive. And, um, if you've read the newspaper accounts, um, some of the reasons he's doing that is because we haven't hit, um, there's a, there needs to be a fourteen-day downslide from the peak of, of the, um, of the, uh, uh, hospitalizations. And that's pursuant to, to, to a presidential directive. And I think at the time, the mayor didn't think we were there yet, so that's why he's made it more restrictive up to the fourteen, I think it's the fifteenth. One business owner wanted to know if, if, if Mayor Buckley, uh, could issue something contradictory to, contradictory to, uh, Mayor Hogsitt and, uh, follow the, the governor's directive of the eleventh on, on getting back online in some of the businesses. The answer is no, um, for several reasons, is number one, uh, probably the, the most important one is, uh, Unigov. I mean, since the mayor is the county executive under Unigov, um, although we're an excluded city, we're still bound by, uh, some proclamations made by the mayor of Indianapolis. So, um, Mayor Buckley could though, if he wanted to issue something more restrictive, he could do it. You know, one of the reasons would be that we'd have, we'd have a, an outbreak down here in Beach Grove and there'd be a legitimate reason to do it. I don't think he plans on doing that, but he certainly could as the mayor. So in other words, he c- he couldn't, um, tell people not to follow Mayor Hogsitt's on the fifteenth and go with, go with the governor. He could push it back a week or whatever, but I don't think there's necessarily a reason to do that. Other than that, is there any other questions you have?
No, I just, it, it gets confusing, uh, because they, we start barking out all these things and, and, and business owners just, they don't know what to do. Well, what do we do, I mean, are, can we open, can we not open? So that kind of clears it up a little bit. And, uh, I'm not really interested in, in issuing more orders. Uh, I'm interested in social distancing and, uh, but other than that, uh, I'm kind of leaning towards the governor a little bit. I think he's come up with a decent plan. Just, I wanted to get that out to you guys tonight.
Yeah, if you, again, if you go on the website, uh, uh, what it's called Back on Track or something, if you go to like www dot backontrack.in.gov and it'll, uh, set forth, uh, executive word twenty-two and it'll show the five phases on, when everything gets back on, gets back online. So if you have any questions, go to that website.
Thanks, Craig.